All right, let's call to order the work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Today's Wednesday, April 30th, we're meeting in the Supervisors Hearing Room in Melody Lane. Pursuant ARS 38431.02H, the public will have access to the main room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board may attend either in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are timed for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. Role call District One.
Crosby is here.
District Two.
Gomez is here.
District Three, Antonori, Sierra, all Supervisors are present and in person. We will begin by getting into Ms. Gilman to kick this off.
So we're going to start off our morning with the Health Department budget. You'll see that it's hefty. Hefty, but I want to focus you on the general fund aspects of it, which are pages one through eight primarily. And then there's several grants that go through the various parts, other divisions of the Health Department. But we have with us today Barb Lang, the Director of the Health Department, and Raphael Malum. Need more coffee. He handles the finances for the Health Department. So they're one of the departments that have their own finance person within their department so that they can handle their grants and general.
Pretty thick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of grants too. But they have a presentation, though. Work us through this. Take it away, Barb.
All right, good morning, Chairman Antonori, Supervisor Gomez, Supervisor Crosby, Barb Lang. This is short and tells the basics. So when Sharon said we have a lot of grants, we have a lot of grants. Forty-eight percent of public health is paid for through grants. Fifty-two percent general fund. So if you look at the presentation, you're going to see the medical examiner takes a large amount of expense. We do not have a medical examiner in Cochise County, so we use Tucson for the medical examiner. So that's that 400.
Do we pay by the drink, or do we pay at a fixed rate?
Fixed rate.
So no matter how many bodies we send them, we pay the same price?
Indeed.
Okay.
So Health Department revenues and expenses, we did go down this year, and I can give you specific percentages as to the reduction per year. Part of that going down is Title 36 was not as hefty as it has been in years past. Our public health expenses fixed and department totals.
And to explain, public fiduciary is under the Health Department. That is the division within the general fund. It's been under other areas before, some more of a legal aspect, but now we placed it under the Health Department maybe over six years ago.
I'm sorry, I'm having brain issues, but public fiduciary is also.
Yeah, public fiduciary is appointed through the court for wards, people who become wards of the court. They're seniors, often people with mental health and medical issues, and they represent their best interests. They advocate for them because they can't advocate for themselves. They make sure that they manage their finances, properties, and they may place them in skilled nursing or other institutions.
So when you have to assess whether they mentally are well enough for themselves, you have to send them somewhere?
They go to the court.
They go to the court, and the court then sends them maybe.
They appoint somebody.
Or they appoint somebody here to look at it?
Yeah, they have somebody here that evaluates.
So if you had a mental ward or a mental arm of hospital, would that help you guys in this situation? Or is it still just, you know, you just send somebody out to that? Okay.
These are the funding requests. The majority of our funds comes from environmental health. That's technical assistance for new businesses that are opening, getting licensed. These are the Santa Italians that go out, do the health inspection. They have quite the hefty backlog. This is where a lot of our fees come from, is environmental health, which really supports the Health Department. We're asking for one position to increase inspections for restaurants, for septic, for private residents. And then we're asking for administrative aid for the public fiduciary's office. They have a lot of paperwork they do for the court, so this would assist them in administrative tasks. And since they do work with incapacitated adults, there's a lot of intergovernmental phone calls, a lot of paperwork that goes with that, and a lot of cases that they get that they have to process. So this would assist the staff in focusing on their main duties.
So environmental health specialists, how many you got right now?
Eight.
You want nine?
Correct.
And so is there a statutory requirement?
There's statutory requirement for environmental services. There's none for the amount or ratios of what they do.
How about restaurant inspections? Is there like a certain amount per year, once a year, twice a year?
No, it's just keeping up with the growth.
What is your current routine for inspecting restaurants?
So they do them once a year, and then they have monitoring. So if there's a complaint, they have to go out and address it, which takes a lot of their time.
Is there a statutory requirement for that?
Oh, for going out once a year, yes, correct.
Are we currently able to go out once a year and hit everything we need to hit?
No.
So they do also, what do you call it, like when people want some food, or, you know, farmer's market?
Cottage food is controlled by the state, but they do provide technical assistance in regard to that. We get a lot of phone calls for that, complaints for that. So we're also, we're also a part of that process, but the state is the one that monitors it.
What do you call it, cottage food?
Cottage food, that's where people make their own food in their homes, yes.
So, so we pay for the person who goes and does the helping?
That's correct.
And then to get your food, what do they call it, handlers permit and stuff?
Yes. We have educational classes, so people can get handlers licenses for restaurants that are in Cochise County.
Right, and you only have, is there only one guy for that?
There's one gentleman that does the septic inspections, and we have one young lady that does those educational classes, yes.
So with regard to health inspection, the cities cover the restaurants within the cities, right? You just do the ones outside the cities?
No.
You do the ones in the cities?
Correct. A large amount.
So you do every restaurant in the county?
That's correct.
But the city, they just don't do it, they don't do, the city doesn't do septic?
City doesn't do septic.
And then you actually go into the restaurant, look at their kitchen?
Yes, correct. For health and safety. And then we respond to the complaint. So if somebody says, I got sick at a particular restaurant, or I witnessed something that was unsafe regarding food handling, we dispatch out and address those complaints.
Just somebody got sick? I get sick at restaurants all the time.
You gotta let us know, we'll go out.
For what? For what? I just don't go back. I go, well, that place is now on the.
Do not return list?
Yeah, that's the free market, that's how the free market works. Now, if I had salmonella, or some other infectious disease that I got, or hepatitis, that's a different story. But just because I got a, you know, a foodborne illness because somebody, you know.
So I want to make sure that illness wasn't a result of, let's say, rodent feces, pontavirus. We just went to a restaurant, somebody got sick, they called us, just like you're talking about, and it turned out they had a rat and mouse infestation. So there's sometimes things that we go out on that are quite serious that may not appear that way in the beginning.
I've worked in a lot of restaurants, and you need somebody to go and check the back of those kitchens. And it is sometimes.
Exactly, and some people don't get sick, but then some people get really sick.
Yeah. You know, you just don't, and sometimes you don't even know, people don't get sick because they got a good immune system or their stomachs are hard as get to eat a lot of peppers, who knows, whatever. But, I mean, when you look at those kitchens, I'm going to.
What I'm getting, what I'm getting at though is like, I don't want to drag my poor wife into this, but she gets sick all the time at every, every place, right? So if I called the Health Department, every time my wife's got an upset stomach or didn't feel good because she ate something at some restaurant, I'd be driving these guys up a tree. There's got to be some sort of criteria.
But sometimes she might have a sensitive stomach that, like, I mean, most kitchens are not the best. I mean, it's really rare. I, I look at bathrooms, number one, and I look at kitchen, and I can tell by how the kitchen is, a lot by how the restroom is.
And then what, what do you do after you do that?
After I do that, then I think about it.
We really don't get people calling, telling us we have a little upset tummy. People call us and say, I've been vomiting for days, I'm concerned, this was the last thing.
Okay, so there is a criteria that basically says, it's got to be what, like a urgent care hospital?
There's a criteria, but people just, we just don't get those kinds of petty complaints. They're generally higher level. People are pretty good about discerning their own illness and.
There's not a lot of choice either in Cochise County, so people go back.
I think that we do every restaurant in the county. Go ahead.
Page number three, professional services, I believe, is like 51 grand.
Everybody's got that on their.
It's middle of page 421, Fund 421, 51,600.
Under Health Administration.
Page what?
Page three?
Page three.
What is it?
It's the same. So is that Arizona Biomedical? Yep, 5100.
Thousand.
Fifty-one thousand.
Okay, so under professional services for the 105,500, that is administration. So 42,000 of that goes to our medical director. What does that mean? So that is Dr. Michael Hoffman, and.
It's statutorily required for a Health Department to have a medical director. Forty-two thousand is very, very generous. Medical directors cost quite a large amount of money for an M.D. So he contracts with us and talks us through any complications with TV testing, any kind of rabies, we're struggling with rabies right now. When we have the state test animals for rabies, he talks us through the level of treatment for that patient. If they've been bitten, he ensures that everything's done properly within the scope of medical practice.
Where does he live?
He lives in, I believe he lives in Nevada.
Yes, yes. He is the medical director.
Quite a few places, yeah.
Any other counties does he the medical director for? To my understanding.
Speak up, you're on my, you're real quiet.
Oh, that is just me. To my understanding, he, he has between five and 10 counties.
Okay, so he might be making 10 times as much as. I'm sure it goes by population. And then I think you were also talking about, well, what happens when somebody is getting COVID reimbursements based on the number of employees that he has? So that makes me like, red flag, red flag. What is this guy doing?
Doesn't have any COVID money floating in his salary. All that's gone.
No, no doubt. Was he, was he our county health director during COVID?
Yes.
Yes. How many other counties was he the medical director for during COVID?
I assume it's the same number, five to 10. He does Santa Cruz, New Mexico, Nevada. And to be clear, it's under a contract through AD Staffing is the name of the company that he's.
Why would he not be the medical director for more than 10 counties? Often do you call on him per year?
Almost every day.
Yeah.
Every time there's, every time there's, there's something at one of the clinics, like say, for example, one of our nurses actually nicked herself with.
A needle.
With a needle a couple of days ago, and he is one of the first people that we call. So he's on call whenever we call, at any time, for whatever reason.
So there's no, there's no physician in these clinics?
He is, well, he's a doctor.
Yeah, but he's in Nevada, but there's no physician, there's no physician.
Yeah.
So it's just nurse?
We have a nurse practitioner, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I'd rather have a doctor that lives here.
Sure, it's just hard to find that. We, we searched for quite a while before we were able to get the contract with AD Staffing. We did have a previous medical director. I believe she retired, and she was like kink out of Pima County or somewhere, but that was quite a few years ago. So I'm a little, my memory's a little fuzzy on exactly where she was from, but it is a difficult service to find.
It is. It is a full-time, you're not asking the doctor to quit his practice and come work for us full-time for 42 grand either.
No, but there is a malpractice insurance requirement that a lot of maybe private practice people would not feel comfortable doing versus when you're in a contract situation. That's what we count.
Okay.
What is a permitted establishment for 200, 400 million?
Where are you looking?
Page.
You're looking at revenues for a lot of them total.
Oh, so that's your revenue, right?
I understand correctly.
Permitted, permitted, permitted. What page are you on? Second, the very top? So this is your revenue, so you get the septic fees?
Yes.
It's a new system construction, existing system, okay, so permitted establishment?
The permitted establishment, that's basically any, any, any restaurant in the county that has a permit, and that's what we're estimating the revenues are going to be from those permitted establishments for that particular year.
And they're yearly, right?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. You do new well inspection too?
Inspectorals.
Inspectorals?
Yes.
Is that, that must be affiliated with the state somehow, isn't it?
We do that mutually exclusive from the state. We have a gentleman that goes out Environmental Health Services. We do work with ADQ quite a bit.
So what wells are you inspecting?
Homes.
Residential wells? Why, why do we do that? I do my own well inspection. I send the lab water off to Tucson, they do the analysis, I have the well company come out, maintain the well. Why is the county doing well inspections?
Only when there's an issue. So sometimes people will call, we'll give them technical assistance, and we'll go out. Like, there's a lot of ours making the Douglas wells, right? So have you been?
Have it, but it's.
But you get leave for that, that's revenue, at least.
Money, money how?
Well, from the inspection, right? Is that your?
Yes, we're paid to do that.
By homeowner? Is it cover the total cost of going out there? I just don't understand why the county's doing well inspections. Why not homeowners doing their own well inspection, like I do? I would never even think of calling the government to come inspect my well. And so I don't get, I don't understand this. It sounds very, very nanny-stated to me.
I don't, I'm sorry, sir. I don't, I don't believe it's, we don't do a physical inspection of the well. It's the, it's a new well construction, so when we, when we, when they, they need a permit to actually construct these things.
Okay, okay.
They have to give us the paperwork that says this is what we're planning on doing, and this is what we're doing.
New house going in, they're putting in a well, they're putting in a septic, you send a guy out, and they do basically a building inspection?
For the, for the septic, yes. And the well is, it's just a plan, it's a plan review. So we go ahead and take a look.
To make sure it's like 100 feet from the septic tank and downstream and.
Because you need a permit. I'm not just going to give you a permit, you have to give me the paperwork, take a look at the paperwork.
Okay, that's a different story.
Then I charge you for it.
Okay, all right.
That's one of the overlaps that you've talked about, that overlaps with development, who we're going to hear from today.
And they do well inspections?
They don't do the well.
But they do, they do permitting.
Right, yes. So it is, they coordinate that.
So what do you do for, you just look at the, I'm struggling with this. Sorry I pick on these little things, they just.
Okay.
Okay, that's what we're here for.
The, the well companies who file the drilling reports with ADQ and ADWR, do that now on the paperwork, it's got to, I mean, I have from my house, a big drawing package that goes in showing how far away it is from the house, how far it is from the septic, and they file that. What do you do that's different from that?
Is that an existing property that you purchased, or was it a new build?
No, it was a new build.
Okay.
It was a new well, it was a new well.
I know we submit the plans.
Did my drilling company come to you to get the permit approved? Does that, did they do that? Because I didn't do it, maybe the drill company did it.
I'm guessing, yeah, when they erected your home, they connected with the county to make sure everything was within the constraints.
The paperwork I have does not have Cochise County on it. Maybe I got an illegal well.
I'll get your address.
I don't have anything that says Cochise County on it that I can recall. I gotta file that thick with all the wells.
We may have, we probably have a record of it though, in Citizen Serve.
How many people with their fingers in my well?
Instead of counting.
Well, I'm just trying to, again, you know.
So is that, is there a statute that relates to this aspect?
I know they have to be permitted, so I'm assuming somebody connected with us when your house was erected.
Yeah, I'm sure the, the builder or the drilling company pulled the permits. Oh, okay.
There's another question. So you have Health Administration, right? And, and that covers, that's like your broad, everybody, Health Department? Then you got miscellaneous Health Administration, so is that another part of your, is that a different? That's, so that's unpaid?
Yeah.
Fifty-ten. Okay, so, so Fund 50-10, basically, it's, there's $12,000 in there, just to make sure that I'm looking at the.
Right, right.
Okay, so, so basically what happens is that places like IT and a couple other departments like Finance, when we're talking about P cards and a couple other things, what they do is they just charge 50-10 from the get-go. And then what we have to do is because I have about 25 different grants that I can charge, that is just a placeholder. We charge whatever it is that we have to charge for that month, and then we will expense transfer to the different grants, the amount. So we put $12,000 in there, and at the end of the year, there will be $12,000 in there because whatever expenses came into that fund got transferred out to the different grants.
And then vital statistics, what do they do?
Vital records, driver certificates, indigent burials.
That's, that's a, had to do that, and that's not easy, and it's difficult.
Yeah, they're quite busy.
Yeah.
Especially now that the driver's license rules have changed, getting that federal requirement. We've had a lot of people coming in to get their birth certificates to utilize as proof to make that travel ID possible. It's been quite, quite busy.
And then even, I mean, with the, the thing about voting?
Oh, yeah.
So you have to get.
What do you do with birth certificates now?
Oh, we do birth, we issue birth certificates.
The state doesn't do that? We do that?
We do that. We're an arm of the state.
We, we, yes, yes. It's a lot easier for most people in Visby to come here to Visby Town, to go to Phoenix, to go to birth certificate.
Yeah, I got you, but there's state offices, there's, you know, and again, I, now, I wasn't born in Arizona.
It would have been fact to go to the county to get a birth certificate.
I go to, I, I just send an email to the, the state and vital records in Pennsylvania and say, I need to copy my birth certificate, and three days later, it comes in the mail. I don't understand.
Here you have to go and, it's a lot more complicated to go local.
Is it?
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot. Then you got Nursing and Community Services, right?
Yes, that's.
I'm surprised that it's the Health Department opposed to the recorders, but you never thought about it.
Yeah, it's a rec, vital record.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand.
Vital being? Born or die, yeah.
So you could do death certificates too?
Yes, correct. We do birth, death, and indigent burials in that department.
And you pay a fee, you have?
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
I did somebody's trust here in 2015, no, yeah, I guess that's what I mean. And I know that I got a death certificate from somebody, and so.
Probably, yeah.
I could see that because you get it, you gotta get the medical examiner sometimes, or I could see the county doing death certificates.
So then if you're born in a hospital, whatever, initiate, I mean, take the record. And Nursing and Community Services, so those are, that is what, what is that?
Those are five clinics.
Your five clinics, yeah.
Douglas. Yeah, Douglas, Benson, Visby, Wilcox, Sierra Vista.
Douglas, Visby, Benson, Wilcox, and Sierra Vista.
Yep.
You guys do a lot of working Douglas, I mean, I.
We do, that's a very busy clinic.
It's a very busy clinic.
And those wages include the nurses at the clinic.
Correct.
And we have a nurse practitioner who works part-time with the, she works at the jail, and she works with the Health Department.
We share her.
Okay, she does those sports physicals and.
What do, what do we do for suicide fatality grant? What is that?
So suicide fatality grant is our mortality review. We collect data on all the residents of Cochise County when they perish, as to.
Voluntarily?
Fired, yeah. Whether it was drug overdose, or whether it was natural causes, whether it was disease, so that we know what the leading causes of death are in the county, and we can interact interventions and track outcomes.
Who gives you that, the state or the feds?
The state.
Good.
Yeah, the state. So what happens, for instance, heart issues are the leading cause in Cochise County. So we do a lot of education on hypertension, nutrition, things to improve people's heart health.
Next, with jail mental health.
Jail mental health.
So that is how much I'm going.
So we have a contract. The nurse practitioner that works in the jail is not a psychiatric nurse practitioner, so we contract with an outside psych provider to provide mental health evaluations in the jail since correctional health is under public health right now.
So does that, because when the sheriff was here, he was talking about how much cost is sent, and Tucson to Phoenix. So you actually contract somebody that comes in, or do you?
No, they, they do it via telehealth. When he sends people out, he sends them out for treatment.
It was amazing, it was like 36,000 to 210,000 Phoenix. So the two, the 226,000, that's what's used for the, is that the mental jail?
Page three?
I am on page seven. So see, 5230, I was just looking.
If I may, yeah. That is the maintenance of effort that is transferred from the general fund over to the jail district to cover those equity.
So how much is that that we?
That, that is, that is going to be 226,000, 98 for this year.
See, I'm just trying to find good data on why we need a mental health, something here in Cochise County. That would help you, wouldn't it? If you had a psych ward where you actually had psychiatrists that could come here?
We do have in Sierra Vista, the fourth floor of Canyon Vista is inpatient psych. Those are short stays, generally, you're only allowed to stay for, you know, three to five days traditionally, 30 days, sometimes the health plan will pay for if it's an acute case.
Because the sheriff was telling me that you guys closed it, or Sierra Vista Canyon Vista had closed the first floor.
No, no. By statute, we have to have somewhere for court-ordered evaluations and Title 36 inpatient. But Title 36 has been steadily dropping every year the amount of patients that require that acute inpatient psychiatric care, which is expensive.
All right, Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Emergency, well, Emergency Preparedness.
Yep.
Two there.
What page are you on?
12 and 13.
Okay.
And 14. So what, what is that and what?
Public Health Emergency Preparedness is exactly what it sounds like. So when the.
Like a measles outbreak?
Any kind of emergency that we can prepare for. There's a giant event coming to Cochise County, they look at how many people will come. um, they look at how many people will come, the routes of exit, should there be any kind of a disaster? So it's about preparing for a disaster, and they work in accordance with, um, the County Emergency Management Unit. So it could be a disaster through health illness, it could be a disaster like fire, could be a disaster like flood, but any kind of a disaster. So they are primarily grant funded.
Doesn't say the G word after the funding line, you know. Doesn't say grant. If this starts with anything other than a one hundred, uh, it's, it's a grant for us.
So the activity code is fifty-nine hundred. Okay.
So that's a grant?
Yes, sir.
All of you, so you get basically two, two hundred fifty K from the state?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Yeah, like I said, forty-eight percent of our budget is grant.
Yeah, yeah.
Significant.
Where does the ADEQ get their money? ADEQ?
The Arizona Department of Economic Quality.
Didn't you say you got grant money from them? And maybe we're talking about. No, okay, I'm just thinking.
We don't get any money.
You partner, you work with them.
We work in coordination or partnership with them.
Yeah, we follow their.
That's for the water.
For a lot of the environmental health things that we do.
Terror terrorism prep. That's a grant too?
Yes, sir.
But just, she asked him, we use professional services, like, um, like, obviously, fifteen, four twenty-one. Yeah, then you have like three thousand. I mean, it's not a lot, but professional services, is that what you're offering stuff too?
So professional services, it's, uh, we use professional services for most or any of, uh, services that we get from any profession. So, I mean, I know it sounds kind of dumb, but, uh, any contracts that we do, but not necessarily contracts, um, like say, uh, we need to send our equipment for calibration. Okay, we have to send it to a, to a professional, to actually do the calibration because just anybody can do it. So we, we put it on the professional services. So it depends on what fund we're talking about. I could give you more.
No, just, yeah, we could fill it later. All those kinds of things, yeah, okay.
They work with various vendors on Stericycle is a common one for.
Destruction.
Destruction of needles and viruses and.
Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose Program. Okay, what's that?
We distribute Narcan.
Nar, Narcan? Pres- prescription drug overdose? What are you talking about?
Sort of seventeen of them.
Is that the grant as well?
That is.
Yeah, which the people those are.
Yeah, we did. So Cochise County unfortunately has a fairly significant substance abuse issue, both prescription and non-prescription. So we do a lot of education, prevention, we distribute Narcan. Are we working in? Yes.
It is?
It actually is, yes. That's also gone quite down in Cochise County. And I have the data, so we track out some. Absolutely.
But was that before the border post? I mean, you're talking like a year.
Not going, yeah. Over the course of a couple of years, we're seeing it slowly drop, and we've done a lot of outreach in the community. How do we measure it? Mortality review.
Good.
That's one way, yeah.
Price, street price of doses.
Everything past page nine, it's all grants.
Everything past page nine is grants? So, so the, all this, so this is again the overlap here. So there's a lot of stuff in here for jail mental health, jail medical.
So there's a, within the jail district budget, you'll see jail mental health and jail, uh, medical services. What you're seeing in this budget is the transfer for the, um, maintenance of effort. So they're not performing these services twice, being here and in the jail.
How do I know that? Because I'm seeing it both on the jail budget and on their budget that they're providing the same service.
The account code, it says transfer to other funds. And so that's what keeps us from subplanting. We have to budget for what we paid for the jail and the jail medical and the jail mental health services is in the general fund still. So the, the sheriff also has that in their general fund, because then that money then is transferred over to the jail district.
So the jail medical services cash carry forward seven hundred and forty-one thousand, right? That's, that's coming from the jail tax?
Which page?
I'm on page eighteen, the very top. I think it's F two, two, zero. Very top page of eighteen.
This is, this is cash carry forward for the Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose Program.
That is a grant.
Okay, that's a grant. So, oh, even though it says jail medical services, this is a grant for the Arizona, oh, I see, Arizona.
Yeah, but the fund line, two, two, four, O M G's reports.
So that goes directly to jail medical services, not in the operation. The general fund, right? Okay.
No, my grand. That one, that one does not.
Oh, so that's just a grant?
So that is a, ah, I don't know what to call it, but that is a, that is a glitch in the system on how New World works. If we, okay, so one hundred, five thousand, fifty-two hundred or fifty-eight hundred. If I call one hundred general fund, it doesn't matter where I see it, one hundred will always say general fund. If it doesn't, if it's not general fund for the Health Department, and we want to change it to something else, we cannot, because it'll change it for everybody. So at some particular point in time, it was decided that, uh, fifty-two twenty was jail medical something or other. And that's, that was the name. So if you go to, uh, to the one hundred, five thousand, fifty-two twenty, it will say jail medical. If you go to the two, two, four, five thousand, fifty-two twenty, it will say jail medical. So we need to look at the first three numbers, the first three numbers between two, two, four, that designates it as a grant. Therefore, I cannot move that to general funds.
This would show up in the sheriff's department?
No, ma'am.
No.
So what you're, what you're seeing is a, yeah, it, it, it's, we're getting into the weeds a little bit about how New World our, our legislature works, but, um, I'll try to keep it high level. So at the top of, of page eighteen, it says Fund two, two, four.
Right.
Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose.
Right.
Department is Health five thousand. Activity is fifty-two twenty jail medical services. If the Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose predates the jail district, so prior to the jail district, all of jail medical services was part of the Health Department, and that activity was designated as jail medical services for fifty-two twenty. So whenever you use the code fifty-two twenty, it's going to be called jail medical services, regardless of in the, in the general fund.
And it's going to be jail.
Or in the Health Department.
It.
It.
It could be in the general.
Could be either way.
It could be any funk, but the activity is, I know, it's.
I know you're saying, you're saying. The only way we, I can understand that is to go into the weeds. You know, I'm just like.
So, so if you see fifty-two twenty, let's, let's see if I can, uh, let's see if I can untangle. Fifty-two twenty says that at some point it was designated as jail medical funds, right? However, the first three numbers will tell you, one hundred general funds, two, two, four, it's a grant.
Okay.
One, nine, six is the jail district.
One, nine, six is jail, okay. Okay, that explains it. Two, two, four is the grants, and then you said the one hundred is general fund.
Hey, Stacy, uh, so we have, uh, some things that are hard to figure out on this particular presentation of, of, of numbers and bar graphs or something like that. Are you satisfied that what we see on the warrants and demands is, is reconciled and we would, it, it's clearly represented, what money's going to where and when we see the warrants and demands? Because that's what we vote on every, every couple of weeks.
The, the blue bag or the spreadsheet that's provided to you guys to help you understand what's on those warrants, they designate the fund that it's in. So in this case, it would tell you general fund, uh, jail district or this overdose program. Um, so they, they run through by fund instead.
Okay, so, uh, in, in place of a business like Granite Instruction or something like that, and where, where the money's going to, it's going to say to the jail.
It'll say from, paid from the jail, yes. So if the jail was paying, what, what?
I was saying, a, a transfer from, from the, uh, the general fund that was, that was affiliated with the Health Department to the jail. So, so this is going to help inmates.
Yes.
So describe to us how that would look on our warrants and demands, uh, sheet that we look at.
So that actually wouldn't be represented by the warrants and demands. That would be an inter-fund transfer, and we actually go over those and those are run through you guys as well on an inter-fund transfer form, clearly stating what department it's going and what fund it's going from and where it's going to.
So that would be an agenda item for your approval before we did any inner fund transfer from, from general fund to another fund.
And it's, it's been rolled into the budget process as well. So we have a number that the departments submit to us, and we'll go over them, and we'll export something, uh, for your approval. And then when you guys approve the tentative and adopted budget, that's, that's the bulk of them. And then any that come later, those would go as an individual agenda item.
Okay, so are you satisfied that what you're presenting is reasonably understandable by us?
Yes, absolutely. When we get there, you can tell me.
We haven't done, we don't do many inter-fund transfers. It's pretty rare that we do them. We try to work within our funds as designated by the board when you approve the budget.
It seems like it perhaps is not easily understood by Ms. Gomez, myself.
So.
Well, you know, we're using two examples. We're using the examples of the warrants and demands. We're looking at the, the, what, what was this, ninety pages? Now, how many pages did you give us today?
I see a lot of native state stuff. I cannot believe the crap. Breastfeeding counseling, seriously?
Yeah, seriously. I mean, I can tell you that that is.
That's actually required statute for the WIC program.
And, and, and just give it, just give it.
How the hell did we survive this species for four million freaking years without breastfeeding counseling?
Because now we have the stuff. In WIC alone, there was eight thousand women in Douglas that could go under this, this thing. I mean, you're looking at, you're looking at, at.
Sometimes I think some natural selection has to be reasserted into this country. I swear to God. This is just nuts.
But you're looking at, 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 like, I look at Douglas, and there's fractured families, right? They don't have necessarily all the teaching they did from their great grandmother. I had my great grandmother alive when I was young. She taught, she was a, a, a midwife. She taught everyone this. It, it's like with the fraction of the family, there's a lot of stuff that women just don't know. And it's something, as a woman who breastfed my two sons, there are a lot of women that cannot do it, and it's so important to be able to breastfeed. And sometimes you need this kind of medical assistance. I mean, and it is a state requirement, right?
The other thing is we have pumps that we give out. We get grants where we can.
Let me tell you, you can get an infection from having that, that it will almost.
Kill you.
It really does. I mean, that's why you need to thank your wife all the time for giving life to your kids. That's what I'm saying.
But she knew how to breastfeed.
She was lucky. She probably.
Had an intuitive, right?
No, it's not. It's not necessarily intuitive. You would think so.
Political food.
So it's not just about, you know, the instruction, it's about indicating the importance because a lot of young mothers think bottle feeding is the way to go.
And that's.
So we talk about how breastfeeding increases brain capacity, immunity.
Immunity.
So it really is about education.
And that's your capitalist society pushing formula on the mother.
Options, market, market economics.
Thank you very much.
I mean, it's all grant funds, but still, I mean, it's still my tax dollars.
I understand, but when you think about, they don't push breastfeeding, they push fine formula, powdered formula, and you know, how much easier, how much healthier it is, how much better, and it's not. So, you know, it's a total misin- misinformation for, for, you know.
It's preparations.
It is, it is. And then they give you, you know, they give you a whole bunch of stuff when you have, they all here, try this, try that. I had, I had actually people try to talk me out of it. You know, oh, it's gonna be bad for your body. Oh, it's not gonna, na, na, na. But, you know, my sons don't have any, they're healthy because of it. There you go.
Pay dividends.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. And he's healthy. So he's not going to be somebody who's sickly and having to use government assistance because, yeah, I've seen all these, these, you know, uh, allergies, which is a lot of it too. When you breastfeed, you don't, your kids have less allergies, which is amazing.
About immunity.
Yeah, it's about immunity. Now there's some cholesterol, powdered cholesterol. We've seen that this is a big thing.
Smoke Free Arizona.
Yes.
What is that?
Smoke Free Arizona is a program to, um, promote tobacco cessation, and also we work with businesses to help them establish that they're following the rules by the state to have ashtrays and smoking, at least, um, the statutory requirement from the building, so many feet from the building. So if we get those complaints, we pass those on to the state. We don't navigate those. We just give out information and education.
Uh, i- is there any affiliation with First Things First with the Health Department?
Yes, absolutely. Large affiliation. We do consulting for childcare facilities, health and safety. We work with young families for breastfeeding and other education. And First Things First is an important part of really making sure that families are set up for success.
Where do they get their money?
Where do First Things First get their money?
Alcohol tax, eighty cents, eighty cents a pack, and twenty cents a cigar.
Uh, what happens if, uh, people cease smoking?
Yeah, that's exactly what's happening. It's such a great program that now they don't have any money because they got everybody to quit smoking, and they were using smoking to pay for the program. So now.
Quit smoking, their health is fucked.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that. Until, until we gave everybody COVID vaccines. I just read this morning that the, the heart attack rate of forty-year-olds has doubled in the last two years. I know what it's for, but they won't tell you what it's for.
Well, it so happens that I have just asked our trusted assistant, Ms. Lohnheim, to email you and you and anybody else that wants it, a, uh, a PowerPoint that I made for the, uh, meeting and two, twenty-two, twenty-two for your perusal.
Okay. Well, I think the vaccination needed to be my kids.
I didn't get it either. I got it the good old fashioned way. I got it right off the boat from China. I was like, Cochise County case number eighty-two. I was like the eighty-second guy in Cochise County to get COVID. And you know where I got it? I got it in TMC, a week after I had open heart surgery. The hospital gave it to me. I got it in hospital, and I never got billed for it too, which was smart of them.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's where I got, I got COVID in the hospital. And it was, uh, June of twenty. It's like one of the first cases. I got the, and you know what? The county got dinged for it, even though I got it in Pima County. Cochise County got dinged with the case. It should have went against Pima County's case, but it showed up in Cochise County. Because I lived in Dragoon and not in Tucson. But, yeah, TMC gave it to me.
Is wife better vaccinated?
Some vaccines, I would argue, yeah.
Yeah, I think for diseases that have been eradicated, like measles, polio.
Smallpox.
Yeah. Vaccines make a big difference.
Yeah, those, those make a huge difference. But those are different.
Yeah.
Those are different vaccines, right? They're not manipulated DNA or mRNA vaccines, right? They're, they're live viruses that are deactivated, and that's been the practice for years and years, and that seemed to work great until.
And they had a lo- a long jeopardy of testing and going through the cycles. It's a long time, you're fresh.
But anyway. Oh, God. Taxpayer in me is just going nuts reading this thing right now. I swear, we subsidize stupidity to, in the, to a degree in this country that's insulting. I mean, I, sometimes, like I said, natural selection needs to kick in. If you're that stupid, you know, life is hard. It's harder if you're stupid. John Lee said that, you know, we need to just let, we just need to let stupid people be stupid. I'm, I'm serious. Why do we have to nanny state everybody? Because they're, you know, they will either survive or die. They will either, 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 either figure out how to do it, how to breastfeed, brush their teeth, wipe their rear end.
Because the commercial aspect of breastfeeding is they hound and you don't do it, don't do it. And it's the best thing, and it's the cheapest way, especially.
I know, I know. You would think they would know this.
No, I don't. Because they watch TV, they're back on television.
I know, poor kids, but I mean. I know, poor kids, but I mean, I mean.
I do have a question.
Let, let people overdose and die. If you're dumb enough to stick that poison in your system, tough, tough crap.
Not everybody has off, if, if, I wish that people could, could get unaddicted like, like I really, really wish it. I, I really do.
Well, yeah, you, you, you don't do it in the first place. That's how you become an addict.
Yeah, but there's a, there's, there's a lot of.
It's a choice, Kathleen. It is a choice. Life is made up of choices. You got roads, you come to wise all the time. You either go to the this side of the road or that side of the road. Do I take the drug or not take the drug? Do I, do I get a good education or not get it? Do I study in school? Do I not study in school? Do I, do I knock up my sixteen-year-old cheerleader? Or do I not knock up my, everybody makes this decision.
But you have to have that kind of influence in your family.
Hey, mom and dad smoked dope, but must be okay. Mom and dad take, take dope.
So sometimes you're not able in the environment that you're in to be that smart as you would say we all should be. You know, some people are not, a lot of people are not that.
My, my, my teens, pre-teens.
My kids, okay, you know, you know, they didn't knock up their high school cheerleader girlfriends. They didn't do drugs. They all got jobs and now they're paying for all the idiots that did.
They had, you know, parents that cared, parents that taught them. I mean.
Again.
That doesn't happen. There's so many parents.
There's a reason it doesn't happen because the government, no offense to you guys. Because the government, the government has taken over that job. The government has taken over the job of parenting. The government has taken over the job of, it's, we have developed this nanny state that, 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 and I don't know how the country survived. We're coming up on our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
We're gonna work it out. We dream, we're gonna work it out.
It's just, no, it's just, it's just frustrating that, you know, the degree, the degree we subsidize for tax. Basic human thinking making is insulting to me as a taxpayer. As county supervisor, I get it. We have a service, we have, you know, we got grants, we got it. But it, but as a taxpayer, I am insulted.
We're gonna work it out.
At the same time, there are some things that you can actually help to kind of deliberate, liberate people so that they can think better for themselves and not go into second. Well, we don't know that because. Might be important to finish, but then they'll come clean. They'll be breastfeeding. They'll be doing all the things they're supposed to be doing because they've learned through these programs.
I was looking at this, right? Nine pages are general fund, right?
The way it is.
The rest of this, look at the rest of this, right? So this, this is, there, this is general fund. This is my tax dollars.
Grant.
Grants go into all sorts of crazy stuff.
Oh, well.
How many pages?
It's not crazy stuff.
Some of it pages.
Uh, sixty, or fifty-nine.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, no, so.
Find in this that you think is worthwhile.
Oh, no, there's, there's stuff that's worthwhile in here. Don't get me wrong. This, the government should be a safety net, right? It is, it, it should be there to protect those that are incapable of protecting, yeah, incapable of taking care of themselves. The people that make stupid decisions, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have zero sympathy for them.
But they will end up in our jails.
There you go. Well, we're, we're somewhere.
Or mortality rate will go up. We're gonna pay for it and done away.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, think of the, think of the misery to little, little kids.
I, I, I got you. I got you. I got you. Commandery inside of it, you know, I mean, I get it.
It's always the spillover into the innocent people, whether you're talking gay or whatever.
That's right. That's true.
We're gonna work it out, Frank. We're gonna work it out. That's three.
What is vaccine equity? What is that?
That is done.
Yeah. It's what?
Done. Grants done.
Okay, all right.
That was.
That's a grant.
Doing outreach in the community for persons who wanted traditional vaccines.
What are, and traditional measles, mom?
Yeah, the basics.
Yeah. I even got my kids, they're getting in the tree together. And they was, he's a father of all because I know I'm one of those in the autism. But I saw at that time, it, you know, so I got separate. But you know, it was weird because they didn't do education on that. I had to ask, you know? And then the, the physician told me, that's because we don't think people will come and do it separately.
Tell the truth.
Yeah, so they, they want to.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can you get them separated if people want, you know?
You can, yeah, absolutely.
You have to ask for it.
You have to come back.
That's not kind of education.
It's actually come in five-year increments. So when we signed, we signed for five years. And because it's twenty twenty-five, we had, uh, that's why we, we actually had a fifteen percent reduction on our budget. Is there's, uh, several of our grants actually closed this year.
What is MRC Strong?
MRC Strong is through our emergency preparedness. Um, we chose not to engage in that and send that money back.
Oh, you did? What's, what was it?
Um, it's getting community members to form a coalition to engage in emergency preparedness activities. And we did put out quite a few callouts to community members, but just didn't get the response we needed. Yeah.
Okay. And then the, the, it's Jeff. Oh, I'm back in here.
That's the name.
Here's the deal, Cochise Aging and Social Services. Okay, I get it. I'm gonna get old. We're all gonna get old, you know?
Inevitable. And some, and.
Some people don't have kids to take care of them. Some people don't have brother-in-laws or whatever. I get it. But that's a different story. That's somebody at the end of the road and then you're just giving them a graceful exit. You know, taking care of them all.
So that's actually part of the public judiciary's office, some folks that, yeah, are incompetent, unable to, like my dementia.
Safetyness.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the safety net.
That's weird.
And health policies, we, yeah, his health policies, it's a, it's a initiative. Health policy initiative. For what page are you on? On fifty-five? Five two nine?
When I found out my reform committee at the legislature, I had, I, I was on the radio one day. I told everybody that worked at Circle K or AM PM or Pilot or whatever to send me video of people using their SNAP card on stuff other than, yeah, and it was just amazing to see. The number.
EBT shouldn't be used at McDonald's.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be used.
My graphic, just like large rice, the, the basics would put through five dollars.
Shouldn't be able to use it in a convenience store. Only in grocery stores.
So something, no, this is.
Oh, so I had a, I showed this video committee. This is a grant, the name is, oh, well, the acronym of, of this grant is Happy.
Buys.
Wellness Initiative.
The Wellness Initiative on the state, um, that's a grant that they, you know, give us money for us to go out there.
Grocery store, like seventy-nine cents for the can or a dollar.
Just services to the community and how they can actually better do things. Pay that on the outside and, I mean, we do a lot of that.
So we have a free food that is funded out to any kind of a business.
Two packs of cigarettes and a beer.
How to take care of the employees. It's a wellness program.
I got it on video. I showed the video.
Oh, I'm gonna ask that we.
Yeah.
Wrap it up. Not have too much cross talk.
Well, I mean, there's nothing, it's, it's, it's sixty pages of, of grants on auto, on autopilot and, and nine pages.
The grants came before the board for football.
Mm hmm.
I'm gonna start disapproving a lot of these. I just. I want, I want, I want to induce individual responsibility in this county. I want people to start being responsible for their actions and being productive members of society and not a leech on government and the taxpayer.
If we don't take the money, they're just gonna give it to the other.
I, I, I heard that when I was in the legislature. It's, 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 it's an argument that, that you can, one way or the other, you know, but.
You won't pay any less.
I, I don't know, man.
You gotta start to.
I'm with you, but at the end of the day, sir. At the end of the day, if, 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 at least if we take the money, we can employ our own people.
I, I got you.
That's right.
You mean like the county doctors?
I got you.
The, the health educator.
And handle state counties at forty grand, rather, I'd rather employ three health educators or four health educators than one doctor. I'd rather have a doctor that lives here.
So if you can find.
If you can find me one for forty-two thousand a year, yeah, sure.
All right. Any other questions for our esteemed health department colleagues, sir?
You guys do a lot of stuff that I.
Yeah, they do do a lot of stuff.
Yeah. And they have a very hardworking workforce. We do.
I, I don't doubt it one bit, but. Um, Tom, I gotta go, I gotta go. I need an Ambien or something.
I'll have her doctor prescribe.
Yeah. I don't even know what that is. It's a sleeping pill. Calming down, makes me relax. Helps me sleep, helps me sleep at night because my brain is going a hundred miles an hour. And if I don't take one, I go.
To avoid soda drinks.
But I, I, I suffer the consequences. I don't put this on the government.
But if you have health issues or tax, help me.
Yeah, but that's, well, what is it? Do you want?
So in essence, we provide many, many services. Like I said, the majority of them are grant funded. They're essential for the communities that we serve. We have a lot of people that unfortunately aren't able to go to private practice to get some of the services that we provide. Um, and we do a lot of education for prevention so they don't end up in hospitals. We don't pay tax dollars for that. So really, we operate fairly lean and we have a lot of grant dollars that support these programs. So we're just asking for those two positions and consider that. We appreciate the time.
And, and if you got another, the other inspector, whatever, do you see, what do you see revenue going up by? You got another guy?
You know, the fees vary, so that's a tough question. Um, you know, we cross-train everybody on septic. It'll help us address the backlog, you know, it'll keep constituents happy and really keep people healthy.
And for the out-of-town community, you, you, are you the ones to go out and look at their septic tanks?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know there's a lot of that. I mean, there's a lot of septic here.
Yes.
Actual recharge.
Environmental health is actually one of.
All right, uh, thanks, Barb. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, so any other questions before I adjourn?
Forty-five hundred fifty thousand a year.
Good, Kathleen?
Your email.
Yeah.
Get your email.
Yeah, you good?
Yeah.
All right, we're adjourned. Oh, well, next meeting is going to be, uh, Budget Work Session for Development Services, right after this. I adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.